To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for coming out here on a Saturday morning. My name is Alicia Greco and I'm Chair of the Select Board. And actually, what we didn't do last week, and I'm sorry I didn't do it, I'm gonna go around the board here and ask the table and ask people to identify themselves by name and what their role is, and I'll start with you, Eric.
Eric Svahn, 14 Old Farm Way, Vice Chair of the Municipal Building Committee. I was on the Municipal Building Committee for the police station. I was on the Public Safety Site Selection Committee, and I was on another committee before that, all involved with municipal buildings. And I've also been, I'm now the Chair of the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Thank you. Dana?
Dana Packer, Select Board Member and also a member of Municipal Building Committee in an advisory fashion.
John Keller, Secretary of the Municipal Building Committee. I was also on the Police Station Committee, and professionally, I'm known as Project Manager.
Thank you, John. Alicia Greco, I'm Chair of the Select Board.
Jerry Heavey, Select Board Member.
Jeff Walker, Select Board Member.
Marshall Jesperson, 169 Elm Street. I'm on the Finance Committee and the Chair of the Capital Planning Committee.
Thank you.
And Martha Taylor, Planning Director, Advisory Member to the Municipal Building Committee, and have been on almost every other committee, studying this since the Woodbridge School Committee in 2004.
Okay.
I was gonna say, for 20 years.
Yeah, almost.
That's just what you didn't do.
Thank you. Last week, we had a rather long presentation regarding this project that went into the history and how we ended up where we went to. I felt it redundant to do that again this time. There is a link on the town website, you can go back and watch the meeting on the YouTube channel. So, this is gonna be a modified question and answer session. I'm gonna ask Eric to speak to the few slides that we've pulled up front, and if there's anything in your packet, this packet is rather big, like I said. If you have any questions about anything that you wanna see in here, just ask and we'll pull it up, because we have the slides, we're just not gonna speak to them today. And I'll turn it over to you, Eric.
Thank you. Good morning, everybody. The, so we had 43 slides, I think we have about 18, and certainly, if you have questions or want to jump, as Alicia said, we'll do that. So, up on the screen is a rendering of I Road from the south, looking at the proposed new Town Hall, two-story building with some attic space in the center. And we're still in the conceptual, still in the design phases, so there are things that can be changed. The rendering does show some detailing at the base, and then a light clapboard building. I think we're looking to simplify that and, you know, change it from the rendering. So, the rendering is a point in the design, is what I'm trying to say here. Next slide, Martha. So, the issue, I think, we'll try not to repeat from last week, but, you know, this was identified for the 2006 master plan about town facilities, and from that point, from work that was previously done before that, municipal facilities have been, you know, an ongoing topic in town. So, the issue now is the Town Hall, and we have, I think that the residents have long recognized that the current structure of 25 I Road has operated well past its prime. It was a building that was an original Grange Hall that was built on site, that had burnt down, and then was replaced with a newer building, and then since that time, the building is almost 100 years old, parts of it with an addition that was added on in the 70s. So, in 2016, after the police had moved out of the basement for their needs and trailers, it was identified that the building, in terms of the quality of the building and the air quality, that the Town Hall had to make a move, a temporary move, and that move was to here. So, we're still trying to solve that need from 2016, and we find ourselves today trying to solve that problem in the best manner for the taxpayers. So, option one is to replace the structure with a new, newly-built, two-and-a-half-story Town Hall to meet the programming needs that will address numerous project growth over the next 30 years. So, we're looking well into the future, and by building a new building, there will be less maintenance costs, there'll be a more efficient building, and certainly, in today's practice of building buildings, much more sustainable and energy-efficient.
Hi, Jeff. Excuse me, wait a minute, excuse me. For the Q and A, everything's gonna go through me, I'm chairing the meeting.
I'm sorry, Eric, so we could jump in and ask questions.
So, okay, I'm sorry, have them go through me, I should've said that first. Leslie, you have a question?
My question is, just if we're looking 30 years into the future, and that is the end of the loan, let's just say, the mortgage, does that mean in 30 years that we're gonna have to replace that building again?
May I?
Just so that people in the audience can understand that.
Thank you for that question, Leslie.
Sue.
I'm gonna ask Marshall.
You wanna do it, or?
Well, we're planning 30 years in terms of programming needs for the functions and the growth and the size of the town. The building we would build, if we do it right and we do it new, should well last, and with maintenance, should last well beyond that. Roofs, when you buy roofs and asphalt shingles, you can buy 20, you can buy 30-year shingles, and so, the 30 years, I think, more of a protection of staffing needs than the life of the building.
Marshall, to clarify, please.
And we did, we did a study, because this question came up, and a survey of some municipal buildings in Massachusetts, including Newbury, indicated that the, actually, we did a bunch of them, the average age of the building was about 100 years old, a little over 100 years old. And of those buildings, over 70% were still in use. So, we looked at, when we did the calculations for how they were going to last, we looked at reducing that down to a 60-year building, which is younger than any of the buildings surveyed, and, you know, went ultra-conservative, but to look at some of the buildings, they have upgrades and things like that, but 60 years is a young building.
The understanding that I have right now, Marshall, is that the sustainability of most municipal buildings is in the 60-year range.
That would be the low end.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Given what we have found in place now.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. I won't do that again.
Go through me. Yes, hold on one second, Eric. Joe, ask me, what is the question?
You talked about meeting the needs for the next 30 years for the town. We've got just under $1 million in an account for a community TV studio, yet the first plan you had had a community TV studio. This plan has no community TV studio, so is this an opinion by the committee that we don't need to do anything for a community studio for the next 30 years?
Do you want me to answer that? You go ahead, you go first.
And did you have a technology person on your committee advising you on the best technology use for the new Town Hall and for potential TV use?
So, we have a long history of municipal building committees, past committees, of trying to combine facilities for the synergies of a smaller footprint, sharing of elevators and stairs, and separate mechanical, singular, larger, more efficient mechanical systems. The town did not want to go that route. The voice was clear.
Could you be more specific?
The voice was-
The town did not want to go, I thought it was a committee decision.
I'm trying to answer your question. Can I answer it?
Yes.
So, the committee, you know, we did have that, yes, that was a past recommendation, and it was something in order to solve the need of the town and bring that in. But, again, the feedback and the response from the committee and from the Select Board was to focus on a Town Hall that was efficient for the staffing needs, period.
Thank you.
And we have an architect that has MEP, Electrical and Technology and Security Services that we're buying.
Can you speak aloud, please?
We have an architect-
Yeah.
-that we've hired. That architect then hires Mechanical, Electrical, Plumbing, Security, Safety, Engineering Services as part of their design package that they're providing to us. So, the committee, technology, no, but we've hired a professional in which to provide those services.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Go ahead, continue.
Option two. Okay, so, option two, as, you know, we've heard people say, like, why don't you just renovate it, the building's there, and certainly, if, you know, if it was, if we were allowed to, under the laws of procurement, to do and put in sweat equity and volunteer, that we might be able to do something with it, but the fact is that the size of the building, the age of the building, the fact of the building has a rubble wall foundation for part of it, a concrete foundation for the other part, the way it was built, in terms of the being at-grade at Morgan Ave, the basement height is extremely limited, and in terms of providing the mechanical, locating mechanical or even staff in the building, it just doesn't meet code, and we wouldn't have ceiling heights, and we wouldn't have great space, and we would also be locating rooms or people with minimal windows or just little basement flip-up windows. The biggest, one of the biggest problems with the existing building is the accessibility. It has the ramp, there is no accessible entrance from the front, and so, we've got a side entrance ramp, and, you know, it doesn't meet the current state and federal laws for accessibility. And by using that building, we would be paying extra, have extra elevator stops or lifts, and the space to provide those lifts, and so, there's a lot of fixes, or not the right word, but there's a lot of extras going with doing that, and part of it would be, you know, do you raise the building up and move it, and then rebuild the whole entire foundation to put it back on? And what we presented last week is we had some costs associated with the time and the effort, which both add cost just to save something, as opposed to demolishing and building new, which would be a more streamlined, and time is money in construction. And the other item, in terms of cost, is renovations in terms of public work. We don't have the, we'd have to strip the whole building down, spend extra money to survey everything, and so, if you don't do that, when you get into construction and there's an issue, something's uncovered that wasn't quite known, it's an add, and we don't wanna go into a project with a contingency of, who was I saying, 15?
Well, I'm usually using 15, but on public work, it is closer to 25.
15 to 25%, because the way the public bid and the way the state has procurement for projects, it's not a working relationship with the CM, where you can go in and get a guaranteed maximum price and put some holds or some allowances in. The work has to be identified. So, every unknown condition is a total add, and it has an add in schedule and it has an add in cost. And so, we just, we've been through it in terms of seeing other projects and understand those costs and have some comparative costs from other projects, so we just don't think that's the best option, in terms of trying to save the building, but then getting hammered on costs, and also, you know, when we get into those conditions, it's usually a compromise. It's not usually for the best, because you're uncovering something that you didn't expect. It's not, and you need to solve for that condition. So, that's the raise, renovate, expand, existing, addition option, and how the Board reviewed it and sees it, and is why we're not recommending it.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna stop here. Are there any questions on this? Leslie?
My question on this is, the basement in the existing building right now has been in the condition it's been in for a number of years. Why hasn't that been addressed, and why wasn't it fixed earlier, instead of just leaving it to be the way that it is? The second-
So, let me pause there for a second. When the police department was located in that building, they did do whatever fixes they could. We did have the Massachusetts Department of Public Health come up and review that, because we had complaints about certain health concerns-
Molds.
About that, with molds, there were-
Infestations.
There were fecal matter that was causing skin rashes on staffing, there was infest in rodent, insect and rodent infestations, there was flooding concerns with all of that stuff, and at the time, it was, the building was too small for anything. I don't know if anybody recalls this, but we had many trailers alongside that, too. So, the building, the building never served the community the way we had grown out of it. So, at the time that we moved the police station, we moved the Town Hall in 2016, staffing, to this temporary location here, to get the police department upstairs into a somewhat safer, habitable space, the project, the police department project went, this project went, it was, in my opinion, and it's only my opinion, it was fruitless to throw taxpayer money after a building that was not gonna suit the town's needs. That's just personally me. And what was your second question?
Second question is, I just, anybody that has an idea about the foundation in a building and its stone, it's completely porous.
Correct.
So, it sucks in the water. Why wasn't, I guess it's like, why wasn't that addressed earlier? Why, why didn't anybody know it?
So-
And, just to follow that up, why do we believe that the new building will be maintained in a more proper way than the old building?
Okay, so I'm gonna answer the first part, question first. That building was moved to its location, after the building burned down in 1927. Why things weren't done in 1927 to address that, that foundation, I can't speak to. It was before my time, I can't speak to that. So, this is kind of what this current Board inherited with that building. So, I don't know why monies weren't put into it back then.
That's the way they built it then, so that doesn't mean that these kinds of things weren't recognized later on.
Well, I think that as the additions were built, and additions were built on, there were cinder block foundations. I believe the mentality, and again, I can't speak for my time, was make do the best you can with what you have. And that did serve the town well for a number of years, but we have since grown out of that building, and currently, we do not have a Town Hall facility that can fit all of our, all of our town boards and departments in a building that the people of the town of Newbury own. We're currently in rented space, and this is one solution to getting that addressed. What was your follow-up question?
The follow-up question, you basically answered the whole thing.
Okay, thank you. Hold on one second. Jeff?
People should really remember that the police station, as it sat either upstairs or downstairs, was not a real police station. It had no real booking facilities, it had no cell blocks. I mean, all those things put our offices and people at risk, just because it was a non-functioning police station. There were no holding cells, there were no protection, so they did the best they could.
Even in the ceiling, the ceiling, if, God forbid, like, there was a discharge-
There's a charge of fire.
-that go through the ceiling, it would've gone right through the ceiling into the Town Hall, so it was unsafe.
With all due respect, Madam Chair, that's past history.
Yeah, well, but you're asking me questions about past history.
I know.
You can't have it two ways.
No, what I'm saying is-
Thank you, Leslie, thank you. No, excuse me. Okay, Eric, you wanted to respond?
So, the building, as it was built, as buildings of that period, did not intend to have inhabitants in the basement. It was built with a rubble wall, and then you would have the occupied first or second floor above it, and it was simple storage, and probably wasn't even heated at the time.
Probably didn't even have a-
A floor.
-any kind of floor.
Right.
It was a shared floor.
So, through that process, and then through moving and putting the police and the Town Hall together, which had synergies, you know, it outgrew it. And as we said, Martha was on the committee back in 2004, that started the master plan process to identify municipal needs. So, up until 2004, not exactly sure how the town identified municipal building needs, but we also did go through that period of the DPW and having to condemn it, and the town has since, you know, made great strides and progress with Select Boards and Finance Committees and Capital Planning Committees to get ahead of those issues and plan for it. You know, we're still trying to solve municipal building needs, and, you know, there's a long history of that, but since 2004, it's been recognized, and, you know, here we are today, still trying to solve them.
So, I'm gonna just dovetail onto that, because I think Eric makes a very good point. Prior to this Capital Planning Committee, I think it was 2012 the Capital Planning Committee was formed, for whatever reasons, and I'm not gonna assess blame, I'm not gonna say, you know, they were wrong or whatever, for whatever reasons, the town of Newbury did not plan for the future. They did not have capital planning involved, they just, it was prior to, we had professional management, the Select Board did the best they could, it was a three-member Select Board, they did the best they could, and, but, without professional management, with laws changing, and not solving the needs, or these, or keeping up with maintenance with these buildings, they've kind of deteriorated over time, and that's what happened to that building. Unfortunately, for whatever the reasons were, the Yellow School and the Woodbridge School were sold. The Woodbridge School, I think, would've been a perfect Town Hall solution, but, again, that was before I was on the Board, I don't know what happened, but, again, we go, we went through all of that in the last meeting. Anybody that's interested in that, please go click on it and watch it, but I don't wanna rehash all of that stuff. That was, we are here, we're where we are now, we have a building that's pretty much condemned, and we need to determine how we're gonna solve the temporary municipal offices of the town of Newbury moving forward for the next generations, and that's why we've assembled this committee, and that's why we're talking about this today. So, I guess, the next slide, Martha, please. Hold on, Jim?
Option two. Five years ago, the town convinced the voters that it was a very viable option to do this, and condensed them to raise $6.5 million. Now, why, if that was a good plan five years ago, isn't it a good plan today?
I need clarification on that. What plan are you talking about? The combined facility?
No, five years ago, it was build a standalone police station, renovate and add on to Town Hall, that's the plan.
Okay, so, we did look at that, and I'll let, I'll let John and Eric, the Municipal Building Committee, they, I believe he just answered that, but I'll let, why is this not, at this point, a recommendation?
Because we were, the recommendation from the committee to build the combined facility, and the cost was too much. It couldn't be comprehended for the cost to solve what we were proposing, and so, the budget got beaten down. It was just build the police station, and so, we build the police station, the recommendation was, let's get the police station, and then let's, let's have a compromise because of the budget, and we'll gobble something together and we'll do it.
So, I think that's where we are right now, Jim. We did wanna try to build, at first, we tried to combine police and fire with the standalone, that went down. It passed at town meeting, but it failed at the polls. So, I, we heard, this Board heard loud and clear, I don't know if you were on it, Jerry, then, or you, Dana, but loud and clear, that they wanted a standalone police station, and then, and then solve the Town Hall next. So, that's what we did. We bonded and built a police station, the police, the police department has its own home now, so to speak, and now, we've shifted to solving the Town Hall problem. We did have an issue with a global pandemic that came into play, that kind of delayed us a little bit for about a year, but we, but in June of last year is when we formed this committee again, to look at renovating or rebuilding the Town Hall. The committee has looked at that, they've determined that it's, it's a better use of taxpayer dollars to rebuild rather than renovate. That's their professional opinion, which is why their recommendation to the Select Board is to build new.
Go ahead, Marshall.
Marshall?
Just clarification, Jim. When that did come down, the idea was to build a new police station, correct, and then the money that was left over was going to go into the Town Hall project. There was not a plan at that point, a specific plan, to renovate or build new. In other words, that had not yet been identified. This is where we are now.
Hold on one second, Jim. Jerry made a very good point. Sorry, you're the first one. Could you come up here and speak up here, so people can hear you? Thank you. Thank you, Jerry.
Jim Moran, 104 Elm Street. Marshall, my recollection is this, that the town proposed $6.5 million, and the distribution of that money, presented by FinCom, was 4.8 would go to the police station, 1.2 would go to the Town Hall, and the balance was soft cost. That's the articles that you convinced the people were good, that's what they voted on, and they appropriated that money. So, that was the plan at that time, that was a distribution of the money, there was nothing said about leftover funds, okay, by right, 1.2 should've been set aside at that time for the Town Hall, and it wasn't.
So, I'm just gonna go back to that question. When that town meeting passed that amount, and this is true for this project as well, when, if town meeting approves this project, and it's a two-thirds vote, it's a, it's a high bar, and it passes at the polls, it's a two-step process, if it's approved at town meeting and then approved again at the polls, we still won't know how much the building is cost, it's gonna actually cost to us, until it goes out to bid, and that won't be until probably the fall, late, late fall. And I'll let Eric correct me and John correct me if I am on. What happened back when you're talking about then, that's exactly what happened. Town meeting appropriated the money, 6.5, and that they were hopeful, or that we were hopeful, that that would've solved all of our problems. When the project did in fact go out to bid, it came in at a higher rate, and that's why the project cost. We had to go back to the taxpayer and ask them to bond the 8.2, I think it was. And that may happen again, this time, if the project continues to get delayed and interest rates go up, I mean, there's a lot that could possibly happen. You don't know how much a project is gonna cost until it goes out to bid. Did that answer your question?
I was well aware of everything you just said, but it never answered my question satisfactorily as, the town thought it was a good plan five years ago, and I just explained why.
That's a question.
And apparently, a good plan five years ago was not a good plan today. That's the only reasonable conclusion.
So, what was the plan, so the plan five years ago?
The plan five years ago was to renovate and add on to Town Hall with a set aside amount of 1.2 million.
Okay.
You're leaving out the police station as part of the whole package. It wasn't, it was a compromised solution. It was a compromised solution, that's what it was.
The solution was, the distribution was 4.8 for the police station, 1.2 for the Town Hall. This is the facts, this is what's printed, this is what you proposed, and this is what the vote has approved.
Yeah, but, Jim, but what's your point? The building did not, the bid came in higher than the-
That's my point.
Yeah, what is your point?
Point being, it was a good plan by the town then, but it's not a good plan by the town now, okay? And we're getting a mixed bag of answers, okay? For every item Eric can lay out there, and I respect Eric very highly in his contributions, his talents and what he does, but the fact is, it is still a viable option at the time- his talents and what he does, but the fact is, it is still a viable option at the time. At the time, it's still a viable option today.
Well, today, today.
Okay, yeah.
So, okay.
I don't totally agree with all the explanations, so it's not.
Okay.
But there's no sense in arguing about that.
No, 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 no. So your, in your opinion,
Yes.
You believe, I want to just make sure I hear you correctly.
Mm-hmm.
In your opinion, you believe that we should be renovating and, and repairing the town hall today? That's your opinion?
No. My opinion is this is a viable option. And you can, there's several options still available, this being one.
Okay.
Okay? I'm not voicing my opinion of which I
Yeah, yeah. Jim, Jim, this is not a viable option. We're talking one and a half to $2 million more than building a new building, set over and done.
John, I'll ask the question. I looked at the estimate.
So I, I got the answer. Thinking back on it, you know, we had proposed that, and the plans never got passed, a site plan doodle of an addition. Because it was, let's, let's build the police station and then let's, we still needed to fix town hall is, is the message from the board at the time, is you still need to do something to fix town hall. And so we had a plan with an addition on the back, and it never got passed, passed a conceptual design.
So town
That's, that's the difference between what was presented then and the, and the option to fix the police and build a police station and do some, something at town hall for that amount of money. And that was what was on the table then. Now we're recognizing, because we've got on more advanced design and we've had more thought put into it, that it is no longer the preferred recommendation due to time and cost.
And I do want to also recall, I recall 2016, we didn't have a project. We didn't have plans to look at. We just voted the money. And honestly, in hindsight, that was probably a mistake, or it was a mistake back then, because if we had a project like we have now, we would be in a better position to continue to move the project forward. But all we had was money with no project. The committee reformed, they decided to, we decided to go in the direction of just the standalone police station. The project went out to bid. That was built higher. If there was any monies left over from the 6.5 million, we would have put that 1.2 aside. But the bid came back at over $8 million. And that's why, at that time, there was no, no, no monies. There was no appetite at town meeting, I don't believe, to just throw money at something that, they just wanted to solve the police station. At least that's what I heard.
Alicia?
Loud and clear. Yeah.
If it could be guaranteed to me that the town would vote to renovate and build an addition, I would say, I'd get right behind it. If I could be guaranteed, that would pass. Because I certainly know that we got to address some of the program needs we have. But there's, what you don't see, Jim, is there's just as many people on the other side of things that recognize building to the best building practices, and that is a consolidated new building. So we're getting hammered on two sides. Whichever, whichever the town wants, I just know we need to get a town hall. And we have the opportunity, because of things put in place, of good planning, to build it for roughly 120, extra taxes per year on an average $600,000 house. And I'll tell you what, if we have to build this thing in 10 years because something happens to this, it's going to be a lot more money, just like we could have built it for a lot less money before.
So this, the difference is this year?
Jeff, I agree.
No, excuse, wait a minute, Jim, excuse me. This difference this year is that this is a shovel-ready project. Back then, we didn't have that. Now, go ahead.
Jeff, I, I appreciate your comments. And in part, I agree with what you're saying. I think you've got several options that still exist. I don't think you've done adequate due diligence. And the estimates you put out last week that I saw on a piece of paper, that I took home and took my magnifying glass to try to read it, it's quite frankly junky. I'm trying to be kind when I say that. And it, it makes no sense for what it says. But let me, let me ask a question for some more credibility. The Fogarty estimate, is that available? And what does that say?
That's, I think, is what the municipal building committee, I'm, I'm not sure where that is. I'll, I'll find out, Dana.
I was asking John because
You didn't ask, you looked at
A few weeks ago, we talked on email. It was due in the middle of March. John thought a month ago, context had it. So the question is
And I believe they have, and I believe they've reviewed it. I don't, I don't know the answer to your question.
Are we paying for that? If we are, we should have it. This whole board should have this in front of them. This is a substantiation of 80% of the cost dollars of the 12 million that you're proposing, and you can't put it on the table.
All right, thank you, Jim. Do you have any?
I have one more.
Yeah.
You can sit down, but I'll address your question. You know, we did listen to the people, and we, we listened closely to the people. And when we had that option, you were, you and others were jumping up saying, bad site, bad site, dangerous intersection. So we listened to you. And by building a new building and moving it forward and having the driveway in the back and on the side, we've taken the curb cuts that are closest to the intersection and removed them. So that there are less cars entering that complicated intersection. And the entrances to town hall are now further down Morgan Ave and further up High Road. So we listened to your very comments, and those comments are what drove us to say that the renovation and keeping the existing building there is not the best option. So
So you can't say, Jim, that we didn't do our work. It's disrespectful that you said we didn't do our work. It's your opinion and not your assertion that what we did is correct. We did what was right. We do this as a profession every day. So you need to be more careful about how you criticize us for what we've been asked to do. And you do that very well.
Glad I do something well.
Joe? Joe, can, can you come up here, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
My name's Joe McDonough. I'm trying to take a step back and look at the bigger picture here. I'm seeing lots of private corporations, lots of private entities do the smart thing after the pandemic and make, and make the most out of, out of technology and working remotely. The town of Newbury seems to have gone in the opposite direction. Because instead of going smaller, like GE and Nike and a lot of the larger companies that, that are in the customer service business, we seem to have a need to, to go bigger to support our administrative programs and our administrative costs. I asked a question earlier about a technology expert, because things are changing at lightning speed with the improvement of technology, with the ability to, to use video and Zoom for meetings, the ability to, to bring people and information in from other places. And that seems to both save money and save space. So I guess my, my objection is that while we had a plan a number of years ago to, to build the campus, and, and frankly, you know, they were nice-looking buildings and it would have been something people of Newbury could be proud of. I just think the world has changed since the, since the original plan to build the combination campus. And trying to find better technology answers to what we're doing. And probably more importantly, sorry if I'm looking in your direction, Mr. Jesposin and Mr. Walker, we need to find some things that will build a consensus. We're a democracy here, okay? We're not a big business. But in democracies, you do listen to everybody. And you, and you try to find out what will work for everyone. I'm not a construction expert. I don't know what square footage costs. I don't know if it'll cost more to tear down or, or build up. But I do know we have a lot of talented people in town. And I do know that if we want to have a long-range solution to our facility needs, we need to, we need to build a better consensus and, and do a better job of listening to people.
Thank you.
I want to thank the chairman for letting this be an open meeting. It's going to be difficult at the town meeting to see equality of the content of what is going to be said. It's just going to be the nature of it. You're going to want to give a presentation, and then the people who are opposing it are going to give a, a minute to, to respond. In light of the Supreme Court decision that came out a month ago, I would suggest that the board and moderator do everything they can to see that the content of what we talk about at the town meeting reflects everyone's views in an equal way.
Thank you.
And we find a way to build a consensus for better town facilities.
All right, thank you very, very much.
One minute.
I know, I don't, I, I'm doing the timer. Okay, come on up.
Brian Millerin, and we're just right directly next door to the old town hall.
Oh.
Right behind
Neighbors.
Neighbors.
Right behind the big hedges.
Okay.
We've been there 23 years, 24 years, so we know a lot about this. And I don't personally have any desire not to have a decent town hall and place to work. I think you need that. I did have some questions, though, related to finance. One of them is, I know this is a pretty nice facility. And every time I come here to pay my taxes, it's not a bad place to park, and it's easy to get to, and, okay, it's not right next to my house, but oh, well.
Could you speak up, please?
Yes, no problem. So one question would be, you know, the proposed debt service on what might be some $6 to $8 million versus the current lease rate here. And I'm expecting everything's going to inflate at 3% a year. So it's kind of a wash. If the rent goes up, the costs will go up on maintaining a building as well. So that, that really doesn't
Okay.
Have to factor into any of this. But it, it would seem that the debt service should be approximately equal to the lease rate here, which is very cheap, actually. If I, if I understand, it's a little over $100,000 a year?
Two.
Two.
Two hundred, yeah.
That's still a good deal.
So, so I'm going to actually ask Marshall, the, on the finance committee, did you do some math on that?
We had, we had crunched those numbers. I've actually published them in the Daily News along with the, the basis for the numbers. The cash, there are two things that I'm going to talk about, Brian. One is cash flow and two is the total. The total for the new building is considerably less than renting over the period, over the period of time Leslie talked about, and I used 60 years as a very conservative number. And, but the cash flow for a lease, for a, the bond is that we paid off in 30 years, even though you'll be there for 60 years. And so you've got that, the rest of that to pay, or not pay, but maintenance and escalation. Those are, those are tough to come with numbers, because when I looked at what leases are doing, there was an article by the local chapter of the business attorneys who do, deal with leases, and they were looking at lease rates that were going to go up because of the changes in the economy. So I think that speaks just to the finances. I'm going to let Alicia talk about the ability to continue to rent versus purchase a town hall.
Thank you. So the town of Newbury, the select board and the town administrator are subject to public bid laws, procurement laws. And we are only allowed to negotiate three to five years out. In order, when, back in 2016, when the combined facility failed, the, the town, when the decision was made to move town hall here temporarily and move the police station up until we could find a solution, the town had to write a waiver, and actually be written two. And the, in order for us to not accept the lowest bid, because by law, you have to accept the lowest bid, because we were working on a solution, permanent solution, the town, the state granted us that waiver.
This is a waiver for the lease rate?
Correct. Not for the rate, for the location. For the lease, period. You have to take the lowest bid. State procurement laws require that. So if the town of Newbury, and I don't know this answer, I am, I'm meeting with town council tomorrow to get a little more clarity on this. But as of today, my understanding is if the town stops working towards a solution and decides, you know, to permanently rent facilities, I don't know what ramifications that's going to have. I don't, I don't believe the select board or the town administrator can make that decision because we will be subject to public bid laws and we could have to move our town offices. But again, I don't know, I, I, I'm getting clarity on that. But that's my understanding as of, as of today.
I see. How many square feet are here?
So we did a, I don't know if Martha can speak to this. We did a, a needs comparison, space needs comparison, on comparing the location here to what was required. And I, I believe, Martha, do you have that?
No, you don't. Marshall's looking forward.
I have it.
Probably 7,600 square feet.
Yeah.
Here, that's the answer.
When we
And that's with the
That's, I believe that, that's without the C.
No, that's excluded. Just town hall.
Just the town hall. There, in the packet that you may have picked up, it starts on slide 39, and it goes through three slides. And what we looked at, what Bob looked at, was what space do we have here? What are the needs? How are they solved in, in this location versus the proposed location? And what is the difference? And one of the things that we added, or he added, I didn't do it, was the storage that's outside that would bring, be brought inside the building and what's called circulation space or non-dedicated space. And so if you look at this present Newbury facility, the total square footage, including some storage that's outside, is 11,483 square feet
Currently, existing.
Here. And the one for the town hall would be 12,952 square feet, about 1,500 square feet higher.
Including the attic space.
Right.
Now, what's different, what's different, what we don't have here, that we're required to have by Massachusetts laws, general laws, is a vault. The vault is currently located right next door to you. That's where the vault is. We're required to keep the vault. Vital records are kept in there, election records are kept in there. So there's that. There's that is not in current this side. So that's another 500 square feet that we need for a vault, vault space. There's also, there's stairwells, there's two stairwells included in the new building with an elevator shaft, a vestibule. We don't rent bathrooms. We don't rent that space here. That's, that's provided by the landlord.
Is common to the building.
Yes.
Correct.
Right. And also mechanical space.
Then we need mechan, that's why they, they add it, similar to how they did the police station. They just made the pitch different in the attic to create storage space so that we could not, no longer have to pay for vital record storage over here, which is where it's paid for right now. We rent space here to, in the storage place right next door.
So to some comment I heard earlier about planning for 30 years of growth.
Yeah.
That would be like double and a half of where we are now.
No. No, 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 no. We're not going to grow that big.
In community and income and everything?
Oh, no, no.
Oh, no.
I'm sorry.
From inflation alone.
What, I think what the, I'll defer to Eric, but I think they were looking at programming needs of the town hall in 30 years. Is that correct?
Correct. It's the number of seats and the way we're arranging spaces in order to, and as Bob has been a champion of, and the board certainly agrees, that in the old way, you might have an office that had room for a desk and room for a bookshelf and, and then room for a table of two to sit down so someone could come in your office and you can have it. and then room for a table of two to sit down so someone could come in your office and you can have it. So, we've reduced that by taking away the table and the chairs, making the office smaller, and providing one conference room that multiple offices can have. We've then taken, instead of having separate offices, we have some rooms that have cubicles or systems furniture so that we've reduced the square footage per person. That, with that and the flexibility to add a person is the growth factor that, in terms of the program, for the next 30 years.
And honestly, our growth, because I don't see the Town growing any big, like as far as big developments coming in and all that stuff, the growth would be mandated by the state government. You need to do this. Like, years ago, we had one gentleman, the treasurer, that was the treasurer, the collector, and...
Several, yeah.
Something else.
Procurement.
Procurement, and he all wore the same hat, and that's not allowable anymore. You needed to have three different, three different people doing three different things. And quite frankly, it's the way it should, it should be. I don't want the same person approving what he's spending on.
It sounds like you have about 1,500 square feet difference more between here and where you would like to be. That sounds like a relatively small number if you have a 30-year horizon.
Yeah, we don't, I don't, I don't believe the Town, and Martha, maybe, I don't know if you can speak to this. I don't believe that, I think the projected growth would be minimal at best.
You mean the population?
No, the projected growth for staffing.
Oh.
Yeah, again, I think it really goes to the state mandates.
Yeah, it's only what the state would allow us to do because we're not really, we're not looking to grow government here.
That's a good idea. We don't like that either.
Yeah, we're not looking to grow government. And actually, I do wanna speak, well, we do if we have, if we're mandated to. But to speak to what Joe had mentioned is the technology piece. That's important, and this building is innovative in such that we have, we currently have temporary, we have part-time electrical inspectors and plumbing inspectors, and they don't have office space, they have a touchdown space. Currently, the State allows us to participate, do boarding committee meetings via Zoom. That's set to expire. They extended it again to 2025, but if there's no guarantee that that's gonna continue, which there isn't, because there's a lot to be said to meeting in person and looking somebody in the eye. I believe strongly in that, and I believe that government should be held in the public. But we had 206 boarding committee meetings last year. That's our Conservation Commission, our Planning Board, our Finance Committee, the Zoning Board of Appeals. That's the work that is really done at Town Hall. The Town Hall staffing is only about 17 people. There's a building inspector, he's busy. There's the Health Department, they're busy. But, and people that work in those positions will never be able to keep public records in their homes. It just won't happen. I mean, years ago, the police, the police chief was home, and something happened. He got a phone call, he got up, got dressed, and went out. I mean, we're a rural community. That's how things were. But we don't run like that anymore. And so there's always gonna be a need, yes, we can move things online. My husband pays his taxes online. I get my parking sticker online. But somebody has to be on the other end mailing that stuff out and processing the paperwork. So there'll always be a need for a Town Hall. It's just, you know...
Yeah, I wouldn't suggest there shouldn't be, but this space is relatively small. If you, I mean, you guys brought up the 30-year horizon, so...
Yeah, I'm gonna ask Eric to jump in.
Have you been next door in the entrance upstairs?
Upstairs from where we are?
No, the next room over.
Oh, no.
Okay, so...
Maybe once.
Right, so you enter, there's the Administrator Assistant, there's a large space there. We don't have a large space like that in the new Town Hall. That space is taken up by extra offices and working space. So, some of the efficiencies, and Martha, you know, you're an employee, you work here every day, you might be able to speak some of the inefficiencies that are downstairs or some of the efficiencies of things that work well here. But I know there's a space over there that if we're counting space for space and you're saying there's only 1,000 square feet, there's a couple hundred square feet over there that is a big, open space that doesn't have desks and chairs and people in it.
Makes a nicer place to work in some respect.
We have that, and we've tried that, but, and we've arranged windows and circulation, and we've discussed in length how people come in and use Town Hall and how people conduct business and how people want to be greeted in a sense of civic pride and entering and maybe waiting for people. People do, in terms of the zoning board. I know when we come up the stairs, there's usually people with council that are discussing things before they get in the meeting. We've had meetings where people have to step out and have a discussion and then step back into the room. Some people, you know, when you're talking about your taxes or maybe, you know, paying and you like a little bit of discretion and a little bit of, you know, not everybody understanding your business.
Right, likely.
We've laid that out and tried to put all that. But, you know, there is no large rotunda or meeting space in this Town Hall. And that probably was something of the past, and if we had a little bit more civic pride and people were willing to put a little bit more money to it, we certainly could make something a little more gracious. But when we go through the plans in a minute, you'll see how efficient it is.
Yeah, I may have other comments that I participated a bit with the fire hall, and that was...
Thank you.
It's good.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, Eric, next slide.
So here's the Town Hall proposed plan on Morgan Ave. And as I previously said, the building is moved forward. The grade is lowered. There, the entrances to Town Hall are further down Morgan Ave and further up High Road in order to minimize cars entering the intersection. The Town Hall has three entrances. There's a back, is your mouse working or...?
It doesn't, yeah.
Oh, we should have had a pointer. You guys did bring that up, and I left it on my desk at home.
I can point out.
Can you read Vanna White?
I can read Vanna White.
Thank you.
Vanna, if you would, the top entrance at the top of the page. So that's back of house, that's the employees' entrance that's bringing out the trash, so to speak. There is an entrance for, to get into the stair and to exit, to get into Town Hall, the second entrance off of Morgan Ave on the south. So, there are people coming from Morgan Ave, there are people coming from the main parking lot where it's double-loaded, would be able to enter and get into the first floor and then get into the stairs and go up to the second floor meeting room. And of course, there's a front door off of High Road at the center.
So this is where I look, because we're on the other side of the parking, have you had the parking?
Those hedges right there?
I'll be the pointer.
Okay, Vanna, thank you.
So, our house is here.
Yep.
So, I guess I have a few questions. One is, in the old days, your parking was facing this area. Now you've got the parking facing right into us. So that's one thing that certainly if we want to talk about modification in some way...
It's a concern.
And so the other thing is, is this gonna be a one-way somehow? Because otherwise, what I see is if you don't do some kind of in and out one-way, you're gonna have people trying to get out here, people possibly going here.
Yeah.
So, I wasn't sure if...
Yeah, that is, that's gonna be an enter in this way and exit on that.
So it's gonna go this way?
Yes.
So, and this grade's gonna be lowered, did you say?
Yes, because there's...
The hill that's here now where the trail is worth, or...
Right, that's gonna be down, how many...
It's gonna be dug out and flat leveled with the street.
Flat leveled, okay.
It's gonna start at Morgan Ave. There'll be a slight rise to the grade towards the back.
Okay.
The back entrance into the fire station isn't changing and still will be as is. Nothing is changing on the fire station lot. And the ability to not have a basement and the ability to lower the grade slightly so that when you enter, we have full accessibility. And then we're going up, and that's the reason why we don't have a basement. And if we don't have a basement, we don't have waterproofing issues.
Yeah, because that has terrible drainage, as you know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
So, kind of off this, but on this at the same time. I mean, I think we've kind of addressed what I'm thinking for parking, if that could be modified. I'm not saying I'm gonna support this at this point, but I just, I want to take this opportunity to point out some of our concerns, because we are kind of the silent neighbors, I want to say. You know, we don't, we don't participate often, or maybe at all, I don't know. But, so those are certainly concerns. The other concern we have for a building structure is the H, what is it, HVAC?
HVAC.
HVAC, is the air conditioning and heating units. So, are we looking at that over here? I thought I saw some plan that showed the heating units and the air conditioning units over here. Our concern are sound, because right now, even from the fire company at times, they have something that comes on, and our backyard is just really, really loud.
So, I'm gonna answer that, because I heard from John that all the HVAC will be contained within the building up in the attic.
The condensers have to be outside, but I think they're, Eric, are they gonna be on the east side of that building? So, acoustics is a concern.
Yes.
And again, we have professionals, and we will address acoustics to the best ability, understanding that we don't have, we don't have like the bigger cities of Boston, which have their ordinances for sound, but we understand that concern and we certainly will position, screen, and mitigate anything that has to go outside. And certainly, in terms of the parking, we will look at that and try to figure if that is the best parking, how to mitigate headlights into your yard. Or we'll look at a plan to flip the parking and see what that means.
Right, or some kind of blockage, because you're actually gonna be bringing, if, correct me if I'm wrong, because you said you're gonna be bringing everything forward. So this is gonna be, wait, so you're gonna go in this way. Okay, I get that.
Yeah, and we're, again, we haven't started the construction documents. We're still in the design phase. We have the ability to make, listen, and to make some changes and concerns.
Well, that's why we're here.
All right, thank you.
We're pretty late.
But, no, no, you're here now. That's okay.
Do we have your name, please?
Yeah.
Pardon me, your name, please?
Diane Bowen, B-O-W-E-N.
Thank you.
21 high. Diane, do you have any other questions or...?
Um, I'm trying to think if I...
Snow.
Snow removal. Do you just bring in, like, how exactly do you...
We won't put it in your driveway.
Okay.
We just...
Because we have...
Huge snow blower. We ran right over those.
Well, we did one time happen in our backyard. Honestly, we did.
We'll be mindful of that.
But you guys were very mindful of it after we pointed that out. But the, oh, jeez, and I just had, oh, trash. Because trash is really important.
Yeah.
And where the dumpsters go. And I bring that up for a reason, obviously, you know. I don't know where exactly you plan to put the dumpster, but I will tell you this, that when the Town Hall was there in the last time, people publicly used that dumpster themselves. You could not, out of 17 people, or maybe you had less people, could generate the amount of trash that was overflowing in there.
I believe you because I see it elsewhere in the Town of Newbury.
Yeah.
So I think we would have to address that somehow, maybe building something and locking it up and so people can't get out.
Yeah, I can tell you when the police were there, nobody did that.
All right, well.
So. And I think that's all I have right now, thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah.
All right. Okay, Dana?
Yeah, I just want, the parking, you know, that, it's interesting. I never, I never thought about, I never thought about your house and the way the cars are parked. And Eric, you can probably answer this, that does, do we lose spaces if we do angled parking? You might lose maybe each row, you might lose one space with angle parking?
Angle parking helps reduce the depth of the parking. If you have a parking space, and let's just say it's 20 feet, for easy math, and you rotate it, you can now have the depth be 18 feet. So, if, and if it is, if we end up with a one-way, it might make sense to angle the parking because then it's easier in and easier out.
I'd do the whole parking lot angled parking. I love angled parking. I'm not a very good driver, and it takes it really nice, you know, pulling in and out. And if we're not gonna lose any spaces, it may help out with the headlight issue. If the cars are turned, then they're not aiming directly at your home, you know.
We'll do something to address that. We won't do, I don't know.
We'll take that, it's a good point, and we're not, you know, that's something to bring up at the next design thing, and we'll also put bollards around your parking space. Okay.
Okay, next slide, Eric.
This is the view from the north side, from basically the corner of the gas station on High Road. Just shows, you know, the building as I had described before in this rendering. And I think we're looking at something that is civic in nature, but also has some residential scales and also has some detailing relevant to the historic nature of the Upper Green and the historic district that it sits in. Where, if you see a lot of municipalities, they certainly, the design trend is modern and it's glass and it's like curtain wall and steel, and we're certainly not going in that direction. We're trying to be respectful to the location and the historic nature of the town. What's the next one? The next one is, again, this is a repeat slide because we shuffled the deck. Next one, Martha, please. So now we're into the plan, and so we have the front entrance, I guess.
I do want to actually speak to this, Eric, before you do it. I know there's been various different renditions of the layout and, you know, where the windows are gonna go and all that other stuff. And I don't believe this is the latest and greatest, but that will continue to change. So, this is just looking at the space as a whole and not, you know, this isn't etched in stone. Like Eric said, this is just design.
We made advancements on this, but basically, as I discussed, there's an entrance that you can get in. This is the stair that takes you upstairs that you can exit. This is like sort of the back door. This would be more of a convenience door to come in and obviously straight through the front door. When you come in through the front door, we've taken the counters and we've moved them to the side. Dana had a great idea on that, so that we have our public space. We have our space where you can sit. You have a space where you can wait for somebody to come in and meet them like your counselor if you're going up for a zoning or a planning board hearing. And if you're around the corner as you enter, you're not standing there and talking about your taxes as people are coming through the front door. So, the counters are moved to the side. We're making better use of the corridor space. You come in, you're right at, looking at the town clerk for the main business, most active business, I should say, and you come in, wait. You can use the elevator or you can go to the stair and go up to the next level. But with restrooms, conference room, the requirement for the vault, back of house, service, storage, trash. And again, we have two meeting rooms so that we could have two smaller meetings going on at the same time. And if we go upstairs, you arrive via the elevator or you arrive through the stair. We have a meeting room, which is this meeting room right here. We conveniently have a nice entrance for someone to come in, and we have a side entrance for people to exit, so it's quite convenient. You can break out. We have space for storage and technology, and then we have more offices. And you can see we have some spaces where we have six people in cubes and smaller cubes for working desks, and then we have other offices with more, more space for their, their business, such as Town Administrator and what they need and how they have an assistant. And we've minimized the corridor, which is the grossing factor, which we discussed, is not rented here in terms of making apples to apples between what's rented here and what is shown in this plan. Does anybody have any questions between the first floor and the second floor? We can flip back and forth. The next one. So, we're up into the attic. There is a pitched roof on all sides, so the space gets smaller and less than five feet is just behind. But we are showing where we have additional storage space for the Town and mechanical rooms up at this level. It's the same thing that we did at the police station. If the room is not needed or we needed to save a little money, we could simplify the fit-out of this for the future, but the space is still there. And we would definitely propose for the life of the building, having a pitched roof over having a flat roof. And also, because of the historic district, I think a flat roof would look kind of silly in context to the neighborhood. So, these are the plans, right? What's the next one?
Yep. Next one is the due diligence.
Due diligence.
Thank you, Eric.
Questions on the plan?
The only question I have?
Yeah, Leslie?
Do you want to make up?
Yeah, please.
Do you want to make up?
Yeah, please.
All crooked now. Uh, Leslie Matthews, one eleven Main Street. The only question I have is the attic climate controlled as the first two floors are? So that, um, in the, if, in the future, if you need, need to use the space as a working space?
Yes, and if, if, yes, it is conditioned. If we don't have walls, then it's more open space. The walls can be deferred to later and the mechanical equipment is here. And so adding any ductwork into a room is fairly simple because of the locations. If we had a basement and this was all future space, then, then we would be running and have ductwork.
So, and it's going to sit on a slab, but how deep does the slab go into the, into the ground?
So, we, we have gone out there with the DPW and done our tests, same process that we did over at the police station and dug eight-foot holes to, and then had a, a geotechnical engineer come out and look at it. We did do some borings. And what the good news is, is this site is different than the police station site. And so the police station site was the old coal dump and the coal plus the ashes were put back in there. And so when we dug down, there was very unsuitable soil and some organic. And organic is bad because organic rots and then it means it changes the, the density of the soil. We don't have that here. So we don't have to do the foundation, um, improvements that we had to do over at the police station. Probably here, we would just be on a simple, uh, spread footing. Before we dig, you do a wide band of concrete and you put your, your wall and you're down below the frost line.
And last question is the water sewerage system because you're going to do a grade. Um, is, does that sit underneath the existing, uh, basement, or are you going to have to change the system?
It's going to go around the building. No, it would never go under the building because if it ever needed repair, we're not going to put ourselves in a predicament of, uh, limiting accessibility to that. So it would probably just follow.
But it, it will have to be addressed?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
It's there. It's a forced main. It's not like we've caused issues because it was gravity flow and all of a sudden we're taking away the ability to do that. There's already a forced main from, uh, to go up High Road and from the police station. And so we're just, we're just tapping into that system. And if we have to move it over a few feet, we'll, we'll do that and we'll have accessibility for the future.
So that's part of the consideration of the dollar amount, uh, as far as the building is concerned?
Yes.
That's, okay. Thank you.
I have one question.
Can you come?
On your top-down diagram.
Sorry, I'm sorry. Sorry, can you come up? Go to the.
On your top-down diagram.
And if you want to point, yeah.
Well, I could go over here and give you. Are we shortchanging ourselves some square feet by?
We, we, we are very efficient in what we're trying to do and, and additional square feet of footage is on two stories, so you're, you're doubling up here. No, we're not.
Yeah, I mean, I was looking at the old Grange pictures and the Grange pictures was just a big rectangle.
Yeah.
Maybe artistically you don't want it to be a big rectangle.
So we were at fourteen thousand square feet, uh, at the first pass of going through the wish list of what was there. And then we've, we've trimmed it down and so, you know, this is the means of economizing and not squaring it out. I know, we, we, there's no appetite for providing for future, uh, flexibility for something that may or may not be used. And, and, you know, we're, we're just not doing that. We're, we're very tight and lean on what, and efficient on what, what we're providing.
It's an efficient building. Thank you. Okay. Uh, David, come on up.
Uh, David Powell, five Kent Way. Um, I come to the meeting with strict instructions from my wife to say nothing. And I was honoring her instructions until this point.
Hi, what? Hi, what's up, you saying?
Okay, general question. Um, if the project goes ahead, will there be a time for, what shall I say, more thorough input to the design of the building? Is that planned?
Eric?
In the sequencing?
I don't know how construction projects work.
Well, we're, we're in the middle of the, you know, the design phases. We have drawings. They are drafted up. They're, they're a little bit more advanced than, um, what we have as construction documents. These are the presentation drawings. So if you would like to have some input or say, I would say, please attend the next municipal building committee and.
Okay.
My recommendation is to, is to email the chair ahead what you'd like to discuss. Ask him to add it to the agenda.
So with that regard, could the, the building committee, please make sure that the public records which are available on the website?
Mm-hmm.
Are reflective of what has happened and, and are up to date?
Okay. We can do that now.
Because current, currently, frankly, um, they are considerably confusing.
There's a lot on there.
Pardon?
Is it because there's a lot on there?
No, it's because, well, okay, it is because there's a lot on there, but no, there are two versions of a presentation and none of them are actually quite this one, the one that actually happened a week ago.
Yeah.
Okay.
This document should be up there. I'll work with Julie, the, our administrative assistant, and clean that up.
Well, I did, okay. Um, in that regard, you should know that I did speak to her this week in an effort to have there be some kind of link within the town website.
Okay.
When you, okay, announce a meeting of this magnitude.
Yeah.
We're talking about a decision here which is projected out for sixty years according to Marshall.
Yeah.
So, um, there should, it seems to me, to be a link so that someone who cannot attend such meetings can get the maximum information.
All right.
And that's not that difficult.
Nope, I can work with Julie on that.
Right, okay?
Thank you, David.
Uh, so the second, my second question, uh, yeah, my question is, what's Plan B?
We don't have a Plan B right now. This is Plan A.
Why don't you have a Plan B?
Um, because we're going to wait to see where Plan A goes. And if Plan A goes nowhere, we'll have to re, regroup and formulate and determine what Plan B is then.
So haven't we learned from events five, six, seven years ago that that's not a good idea?
Well, go ahead, Eric. You've been on this for so long.
Right, so for five, well, since, again, two thousand and six, when it was identified, it took to two thousand and twelve to actually get, move the needle and actually get committees started and focused on this. We've, we've been through a lot of options and people have pointed out that we've had other options and multiple options, uh, and combined facilities and police and fire and police and town hall, town hall and, and fire on Morgan Ave. We looked at a number of sites. I believe we are recommending and have done the due diligence and we got criticized for having forty-three slides and a long presentation on history last time, that we've done the due diligence and this is the best option and recommended option. Uh, and, and Plan B would be a compromise, again, and we would be back to something that is less efficient, kicking the can down the road, which is more expensive, uh, and not actually meeting the needs that we've, we've worked through, um, in terms of program and then rightsizing and then being as efficient as possible. So this is the best solution on the table. Um, and, and this is what's being presented at the moment. We're not, we're past the point of, of having three or four horses in the race to try to figure out which is the best one. This, the other horses have fallen behind. They're not even in the race anymore. This is the best option going forward.
If, if I could clarify, what I think your question was is, what is going to happen if, if it comes up with a no vote? Is that, that was what your question was, wasn't it?
Yes.
That, that's, that's what I, that's what I thought.
Well, I think at that point, the select board would have to meet and discuss it and determine any next steps. Uh, we'll have a new board. I don't know what direction the board, what appetite will be. I can't even speculate to think what that might be. But that will be the first meeting after town, town meeting. That's when we would, we would decide what next steps were.
Okay, so let me simply suggest that it should not, it should be an initiative which immediately involves the community in a way that the community really hasn't been involved in this process, which I think is, that's why you're reaping the criticism that you're getting, if I may suggest.
Thank you.
And, and, you know, I know the tremendous amount of work that's been done and I respect it and I think it's excellent. I do have some issues with the building design and, and so on, but that's not for this kind of assembly. But what I think concerns me is that we seem to be in a sort of kamikaze mode. And that is, well, that is simply, if it doesn't get through, we are planning for it to get through. And we're not thinking about, well, where, where do we go? What do we do? How do we, in fact, cushion the landing or, you know, you can use lots of metaphors. And I know that's tough to do. And I understand, you know, what Eric's just said. Yes, this is the best proposal.
Mm-hmm.
But at the same time, I, I and other people are not looking, I think, for other proposals. We're looking for, what do you do in a community this size where you have certain needs which are mandated by the state, but you have a lot of other things where you can choose? And I haven't heard discussion of that kind of stuff in a broad sense long before you get to sites and buildings and all the rest of it. And I really think that that's what has to happen as well as the kind of excellent work that the building committee has done.
Thank you.
Okay? So, thank you.
David? Dave?
Yes.
I kind of closed my eyes and it felt like eighteen years ago was, the only guy that was missing was Dave Mountain. Seriously, you're always good at communication. You know, go to some of the meetings and get involved and help us out. So it'll be good.
And I know, and I know you will.
And like I said, it, it felt like the planning board for a minute, but it was good.
Well, it, okay. I'm, I'm going to say, I do have the shortest walk in town, so probably, uh, now anyway. And that might be the reason I don't want to have it moved.
Don't be afraid. Count on it.
All right. Eric, do you want to speak to this slide?
Um, sure. So, you know, the, again, with the thirty-four slides that we had previously posted, um, we've, and the addition, and the planning that has happened since two thousand and twelve and the numerous projects, you know, the committee has brought, uh, several, uh, potential sites, various development options, uh, have been considered. Uh, we've, we've looked at questions and people said, let's get it privately built. And we've, we looked at the procurement laws and, and understood that we, we couldn't do that. We looked at buying a building, like the building on Apple Street, and understanding that the, how it was built, uh, and the amount of square footage, then we would have extra square footage. And we also would have limited abilities to add parking to that. We looked at free sites that were donated, uh, proposed to be donated by the governor's academy and, and, um, as excellent as that was, and, and excellent location, and the police certainly liked the Route One location. Uh, you know, there was a cry of, of, of how could we, um, be beholden to somebody else's, um, uh, sewer treatment plant? And did we know what those costs were and how could a municipality do that? And, and the cost in which to hook up, so, didn't, um, pan out. We've also heard other sites on Route One, like the, the doctor's house on Hanover and, and High, uh, sorry, on Route One. Um, you know, we toured that building. We looked at every single room. It's, it's, it's an old doctor's office and every single room has a sink and a, and a counter and very small. And the, and the meeting room in that space, um, cleared my head by about two inches with the beam that went through two different rooms. And so it, it just wasn't, um, again, the efficiencies of building and, and, um, updating and renovating that would not meet the program and would have costed more than, um, building a new facility. We looked at the town hall, uh, well, sorry, we looked at the town forest, which is next to the transfer station, which the town owns. We call it the town forest. And if you take Newbury and you put it in a nice rectangle and you draw an X through it, the dead center of town is right where Boston and, and Hay Street meet. But it, it didn't perk and the fact that we have a mission-critical facility that's, um, that does, cannot be put on a septic system or cannot be put on a, a tight tank alternate system, which is fine for residential, but not for municipal building. Um, and then there was some concerns about having a town hall right next to the, the transfer station. So going back to the historic center of town, the historic district, um, and, and working through, uh, multiple options on Morgan Ave to improve and keep municipal offices, police, fire, and town hall adjacent to each other for the convenience and efficiencies of, of residents in terms of doing business in town. Or, um, you know, as we heard before, people go and need to get a, a license and they have to go from town hall to the police station and then back. Um, the chief and, uh, the town hall regularly need to meet and talk to each other. And so there are synergies built into the Morgan Ave by having those, um, municipal buildings all on the same street.
Thank you, Eric. Um, Dick, did you have a question?
I do. Stay here.
Yeah, come up here, please.
How, do you hear me?
Yeah, no, but.
Yeah. If you can't hear me, raise your hand. Okay. My name is Dick Bazergan. Um, I lived on Green Street for thirty years and since two thousand and six, I've been at the old folks' home, Caldwell Farm. But I want to address the park, the parking and I think, hope we can put it to bed. Uh, first of all, Laura Butter was very, very respectful and very, very rational in her requests. Um, Dana, that was the greatest suggestion, I think, and a good compromise. Um, and I think if we have back-end parking, you'll have every, um, what's the right word? Auto body shop in Newbury lobbying for it.
All right, thank you. Okay, uh, next slide, Martha. I think we've already spoken to this, Eric, right?
Yeah, so now, um, for the next couple slides, we get into the proposed, um, square footage, the Kent Way versus the, the town hall program, adding it all up with the storage trailers outside and the missing, um, grossing factors that's not counted if you, if someone just pulls the least square footage, that eleven thousand four hundred and seventy-three versus a, a proposed new twelve thousand six hundred and seventy-two square footage for the building.
Next slide.
So, again, the space needs here and, um, what's highlighted in yellow, if you can see it on the numbers that are next left of the line, are zeros that are highlighted for Kent Way net square footage, things that aren't here that need to be incorporated into a building that makes up the difference between what, what you can see and walk around here at town hall and what is proposed.
Next slide. Same thing here, more yellows that we don't have that we need.
Right, and so this is more focused on the program of, um, of the new town hall and the spaces that we don't currently have that will be provided for in the new town hall.
Next slide.
Next, uh, is, town hall's the cost components and this has been a working spreadsheet of costs. Um, and it, out, this is trying to outline the renovation addition versus the new construction costs. So at the bottom of the page, the first column is a renovation addition with the project contingency difference of about two-point-five million, the projected renovation cost, um, in, in time and added unknown costs are thirteen million, thirteen-point-six million versus eleven-point-five. And this, this is a, a working spreadsheet that we've published, um, since the beginning of the municipal building committee and gets updated as the, uh, as, as information gets checked and validated and, and make it as current as possible.
Okay. So this is the solution.
All right, so this, uh, this is the solution. Uh, all the planning efforts, all the past committee planning efforts have, have come to this point in order for the committee to make the recommendation, um, for the town hall. Alicia explained, um, issues with leasing and unknown issues of, of waivers that, uh, might go away and what that might mean if we have, if town has to go through a bid process and accept the lowest bid and, and moving town hall around and what that might mean. Um, Alicia, you couldn't speak to the money that's already been appropriated and saved for this project. And so the total ask for, um, the new building isn't the total amount to be bonded. There's money that's already been saved and Finance Committee has been reviewing that.
So, I'll just speak to this just a little bit, Eric. So, town meeting over the past four or five years has been putting money aside to solve this solution. That tells, tells me, personally me, that they don't believe renting the space permanently is a solution for the town of Newbury. And we'll see what happens on Tuesday, Tuesday night for this. Next slide.
That's it?
Nope, question and answer. Okay, so, we'll take Q and A. Anybody? Steve, come on up. If we could try to keep this as just questions and as concisely as possible, that would be great.
I am Steve Manchin on 14th Street. Sort of builds upon something I heard earlier about Plan A, Plan B, whatever. One thing, I'm hoping that the three current members of the board that will be here in a month, as well as the two, one or two additional members, is that I would really like to see a commitment by the members of the board that if it fails, either at town meeting or at the ballot box, we're done. We're going to have to come up with a new Plan B and not keep on going back and back and back. I think there was an instance where something failed at town meeting, where people may or may not have been paying attention at the ballot box when that other vote was still allowed to go through. And then there was a tendency to say, well, let's have another special town meeting to get it through. Well, in my opinion, if you keep on voting and voting and voting, eventually you'll get the outcome that you want. So, I'd like to see whether this project goes up or down as currently designed, that there'll be a commitment from the board to follow the will of the voters and work on a Plan B and not just another round of voting, hoping to eventually push the wet noodle across the finish line. So, and again, three members of the board are still going to be here come the end of May.
Is that your question?
Yeah, and I'm not sure it's fair of me to ask you to make a commitment right now, but I really want to.
I can answer that question. I'm committed to find a solution that's in the best interest of the taxpayers and the residents of the town of Newbury. Me, personally me. I'm committed to that. I don't know if the remainder of the board wants to speak.
I think that if it goes one way or the other, that the town will be paying attention, Steve. So...
Dana?
Oh, I'm definitely committed.
Committed to?
Committed to making this a consensus.
Yeah, we have to build consensus.
I, I think that that is probably the best way to address this, is...
Well, but it's a capital solution. Are you committed to finding a solution to renting town hall? I mean, so, here's, here's the thing. Renting is an option. I have never once heard anyone come up and make an argument why we need to stay here and rent. Steve, I'm going to ask you to sit down. Thank you. If there is, I know I saw a small group of people out here, and I believe I see somebody here from that group now, last week with a no vote. And I asked them last time if they could explain their rationale, and nobody was here to speak to it. So, I'm going to ask again. Tony, I see you back there. Can you come on up to here and make your, I mean, the rationale behind not the no vote, I guess?
Well, Tony Matthews, 111 Main Street. The idea is to stop, stop this project at town meeting to give you guys enough time to realize that you need a bigger spot to put this building. The building is a good design. That lot is too small for it.
Okay, so, that's your argument? That's your rationale behind it? Well, your rationale, not an argument, but your rationale.
That's my opinion, yes.
Okay. All right.
Now, I noticed, I don't know if it was intentional, but the Walton Ave property was never mentioned today.
The what property?
Walton Ave property, next to the Round School.
Oh, that was already vetted out? That was already, the Conservation Commission went out there?
That wasn't vetted out good.
Well, the...
Not professionally.
Excuse me. The conservation agent went out there and looked at it and determined that the location was too wet to house a council on-aging facility, and the town hall would be significantly larger than that. So, if it can't fit a smaller building, it won't fit this building.
There's seven acres of driveway and according to my map, up there.
Okay, hold on.
I happened to speak to the geologist or the consultant yesterday on another project. And I said, no, I heard your name recently in Newbury, and he talked about that project. He says, too much white land, you wouldn't be able to build on it.
Sure.
So, that went away quickly. That was seven, eight years ago.
I think I would spend some of this $5 million that you have, put aside. Get a surveyor out there.
Flag it.
Already been done.
It has.
You can't build on it. Not for what you need. That's, you hired a consultant to go out and give an opinion, and that's what he does. He gives an opinion. He said, you cannot build on that lot.
So, Tony, you know what I'll do? I'll have the, on tomorrow, no, Monday, I'll have that report come up and I'll have it sent, sent to you. And we'll have it at town meeting.
Should send it to the whole town.
No, no, I'll have it available at town meeting.
I did see there was two paragraph bulletin or a letter that was sent out. And he said that he walked the 15 acres and it was too wet. I don't think you can get through there, walking through there.
All right, I'll look into it, thank you.
Pretty thick woods. Needs developing.
All right, thank you.
This building would fit. It would fit the building and the parking lot. There's town water and sewer right there. It makes sense to not stuff this huge building on that tiny corner lot on Morgan Ave.
All right, thank you.
My thoughts.
Thank you. Any other, anybody else?
I want to, I want to address, there's a couple of people in town. The rumors running around that the state is going to force us to move to Seabrook or something is, is, is what, is what is going around. I, I happen to have mass state law right here in my hand, and, and I, I appreciate, you know, you, you mentioned this earlier in this meeting, and I'm not, this doesn't really talk about whether we have a plan to move out of here or not. I, that, I, I don't have any information about that.
The waiver, you mean?
Yeah, but what this, what the law says is we, we can rent and lease here for 30 years. And, and, and we are not going to be thrown out of here by the state anytime soon. Now, I agree with Marshall about the fact that we do have to build, we should build a new town hall someplace, okay? I, I agree with that. But we have, I think we've been here seven years, maybe? We have like 23 more years to go. Now, whether that's a good idea to kick it down the road that far, I'm not saying one way or the other. I just don't want people going to the town meeting and, and thinking that they have to vote one way or the other because this is not a viable option for the near future because it, it certainly is.
So, have you run that by town council to see if the application is correctly? Because I know the law has to be...
I, I have not. But one thing I have done is I requested the rental agreement and, from the town, and I got it. I have a copy of it. And it does expire in July of, of 24. And I have asked, I've asked you, as a matter of fact, and some others that work here, on whether or not we are in current negotiations to extend that lease.
Why not?
And we're not.
Not yet, no.
And you have to give notice.
Yeah, we'd have to give notice.
What's your duration? You have to give notice that you're going to be looking elsewhere.
Yeah.
Is that a nine-month, six-month, one-year?
That, I'm not sure. I don't know.
And it's, I think it's kind of important, you know, as far as that plan goes, you know, about, about what is the plan going to be if we, if we have, even if we, even if it votes yes, the building's not going to be ready to move into until early 2025, which is going to be a year after our current lease has expired. So, I would think that we ought to be doing our homework and making sure that, that, you know, that we, we have a home. Even if, even if we're going to build this building, we need to extend that lease. And I'm, I'm, I'm kind of working on that. And the last thing I want to say is, I, personally, I can't overemphasize the debt that we have coming up in the future. I talked about it last week. I know that the chair and Marshall have been, have been going over, you know, what I talked about last week. I don't want to, I don't want anybody to assume that, that there's expenses that aren't covered or expenses that are covered. I do know what, what the total, what the total budget is and what it looks like. And I'm just, I'm going to go through this, this list one more time because, because it's important and it's not necessarily in the capital improvement plan. One would be obviously the, the $8 million debt that we would take on with this particular project, which would be for about 30 years. The NES needs a $2 million HVAC system put in it, which, right now, I believe on the capital improvement plan is another debt exclusion.
That's, that's remains to be determined because...
Okay, that's fine.
The school was supposed to take care of that, so...
I'm just...
That's an unknown. That's not a definite. So, don't say that with the towns on the hook for that because that's an unknown.
Well, it's an expense that we need to do. We, we know that much.
We might not.
Well...
It might come out of the district, but go ahead.
The, the library, the library needs a $650,000 roof, which I, I believe is also on the capital improvement plan of an additional debt exclusion. Triton, which is not in our capital plan because Triton doesn't have to be in our capital plan, but Triton either needs a whole new school or they need a serious renovation, which is going to be coming up at least within the next 10 years. This is a 30-year mortgage we're looking at, so, we're in the same timeframe of expenses. And at a minimum, Triton's going to cost us $10 million.
How do you know that?
Well, it's, right now, the estimate is a $60 million total, either rebuild or renovation. You divide that by three, three towns, you're going to, you get $20 million apiece per town. And let's just assume that the state is going to go, throw in 50% of that money. I'm taking best-case scenario, we're still going to be on the hook for about $10 million for Triton.
Dana, I don't think that's accurate.
Well, that, that's okay. You know, I, there's a lot of information in this room that may not be that accurate. I'm just throwing something else out there. That's, that's all I'm trying to do. Whittier Tech. Whittier Tech is a $400 million project. Newbury is going to be on the hook for a portion of that project. How much? I don't know.
How much?
Our, our fire department on Morgan Avenue, there's, there's YouTube videos, there's, there's a lot of factual evidence of what the Newbury Fire Department needs for capital improvements. Right now, it's not even, it's not even on the books, except for paint and siding and, you know, maybe a new roof, that kind of thing.
So, can I speak to that for a second?
Sure.
I met with the, I went down to the fire department because last Saturday, we had a resident come in and say that she toured the building the week before, and there was mold in there, and there was crumbling walls, crumbling floors. And Dana, I believe you said that there's the, the floors are damaging the fire equipment as well.
Correct.
In there. And so, I wanted to go see this for myself because it was the first I had heard of it. The fire chief and the deputy fire chief, both were not available for me to speak to. But I did speak to two firefighters that toured the building with me while we watched the video of when Nancy Burke was explaining what she was seeing in that building. And we, we toured it exactly the way she did, and there is no mold. There is no mold. There was mold that was addressed when they did the renovation. So, there is no mold. There is no crumbling buildings. I did text the fire chief while he was out, and his response, and asked him these questions. And his response, my question was, at Saturday's Q and A, concerns were raised by a resident regarding the Morgan Ave fire station, particularly black mold, structural issues, including crumbling walls and floors, and an imminent need for a new firehouse. Can you confirm that these are legitimate issues? It's the first that I have heard of them. And he got back to me and said, Alicia, we did have mold in one of the back rooms, but when we remodeled the inside of the facility, that was taken care of. The apparatus bay floor is breaking up in spots, but I have it in my capital plan for replacement next year, which is identified, I believe you saw it. One of the walls was drifting, but I believe that was anchored a few years ago. I'm out of town on vacation. I'll confer with James when I get back and make sure that everything is what, what I say. And I said, thank you, I'll talk to you on Monday. So, Monday, I will be meeting with the chief and the fire chief. But those were issues before. They're no longer issues. I also asked about the new fire equipment. Is that floor damaging the fire equipment? And he told me, their words to me, were absolutely not. They were damaging an older piece of equipment that is no longer in service. The current equipment that is there is not damaging the floor.
So, you mean the floor is not damaging the equipment?
Yeah, that's what I meant. The floor is not damaging that piece of equipment. It's very important that our equipment stays whole because it's very expensive and we do lease them and we have to take care of what we have. And the fire department is. And to say that the fire department needs these things when they don't need them is misinformation. And I would appreciate you, Dana, please, check your facts with the fire chief and the people that are in charge of these facilities before you, before you publicly announce that it's damaging our fire equipment because it's, it isn't. As far as Triton goes, that number, $10 million, is, could be seen as a scare tactic because I don't, we don't know what that's going to bring. The fees, the feasibility study hasn't even been done yet. It's five to six years out. Whittier, the last time Whittier did a renovation, it was of extremely minimal impact to the town of Newbury. Whittier is very good at getting monies from the state. That we are, they have 11 cities and towns. Newbury is a very small part of that. Is it coming? Yes. Will it be $10 million? Probably not. The, you also, the last time you said that the town of Raleigh has 900, is on the hook for the Triton budget for an additional $900,000, and that is, could be Newbury next, unless Newbury has on the horizon. And I will ask Martha to speak to the question.
Actually, I did not say that could be Newbury next. I did not say that.
Okay, well, maybe I misheard you, but that's what I thought I said. But Newbury will...
What I said, what I, what I said was, and my point to that was, was that they are, there's always going to be hidden expenses. And, and there always is going to be hidden expenses that we can't foresee. Raleigh didn't foresee a $900,000 increase.
Oh, yes, they did. I disagree. They knew the numbers were wrong.
Maybe they did, but they, they shot it down. So, if they, if they, if they saw it, then they had already made a decision that they weren't going to accept it.
Well, that's okay. But they saw it. But the town of Newbury, on, on the other hand, doesn't have development. Martha, can you speak to incoming development in the town of Newbury and what would create that kind of a, of an influx?
It would have to be something probably pretty, pretty significant. Right now, the school enrollment has actually been, been decreasing...
Yes.
...over the last decade or so.
So, we have declining enrollment. We're trending to have a declining enrollment. There's no development on the horizon similar to what happened to Raleigh. I feel Raleigh's pain, I do.
Yeah.
But that's not Newbury. Raleigh is not Newbury.
Alicia? People do need to remember too, when you get that kind of growth, and these houses were substantial houses, it is offset by the taxes they're paying. So, there is a lag period if it happens to hit kind of at the wrong time like it did for Raleigh. But those issues will mitigate themselves. There was a lot of new houses that went in, in Raleigh.
Thank you, Jeff.
And that's a really good point, Jeff. And that, that is part of, part of what I'm just pushing forward is that, you know, you, you need to look at where, you know, I, I don't personally think we can afford everything. And I think each and every one of us should go home and prioritize on what we can afford and what we can't afford, and what do you want to afford? It's your choice. Everybody's going to get one vote, you know? That, that, that's really the, the bottom line about this. This is democracy. You get one vote. I am just trying to bring to the forefront about, you know, what, what we have for total money and what we are planning on spending in the next 10 or 15 years. And I'm telling you, there's going to be some shortfalls and, and...
I don't see how that is.
Well, that's okay. That's okay. I, I wasn't actually, I didn't actually finish my list, and I just got a couple, I got a couple of more items on my list. And one of them is the, the bridges in town. We have the Cart, I got the Cart Creek, I'm not sure that's correct, at Orchard Street. Central Falls in, in River Road are all three bridges that have to be replaced in a filling. Culpage Bridges.
Big difference.
Well, they're, they're any, all of them are anywhere between $750 and $1 million to replace. You can call it whatever you want, you know? It's like, but that's, that's reality. And then, and then, you know, I did not mention this last time, but the, you know, the COA is in a great place here right now. But eventually, we all know that if we, if and when, well, we are going to move out of here because, like I said, we can only stay here for 30 years. So we are going to have to move out of here eventually. But we need to be thinking about the COA and where that's going to go. And that's all, that's all I, that's all I have.
So, thank you. So they have, they had, you had sent this capital needs assessment plan that came through. Last year, you had referenced it, last week, rather, you had referenced it. And there's a lot of items on here that I have scratched off because they're, they're paid for already. The council on aging of the town hall project, that sits out there. That's what we're here discussing. The council on aging van, $150,000. We already bought it. We used ARPA money. The Lock and Road Dam, the removal of the Lock and Road Dam was $900,000. We've gotten grant money for all of that. It hasn't been on the taxpayer at all. That's been fully, fully funded. There's a replacement of fire apparatus. Those are all leased, and they come out of the operating budget. There'll be no additional assessment to the tax--
The Lock and Road Dam, is that what you?
The Lock and, yeah, the Lock and Road Dam.
And the budget message that Tracy wrote, which is excellent, by the way. I highly recommend you get a copy of this budget message, and you read the whole thing. The Lock and Road Dam, we're still awaiting an $866,000 grant that we have not got yet.
Martha? Two thirds of the funds are in hand. We're waiting for a NOAA grant, but it's expected that we will be receiving that.
Okay.
So that's, that's funded by--
Yep, just checking.
Yep, no, no, that's okay. There's a replacement of fire apparatus. That's through our operating expense. That comes through, they have a capital. Each department has a capital line. So there'll be no override for that. The replacement of the command vehicle, that is being pushed ahead, I believe, till next year. But it's going to come out of free cash. We have that free cash set aside, identified for that. Replacement of an ambulance, that comes out of the ambulance revolving fund. That is not going to be an override. Replacement of the apparatus floor at the fire department is needed. It's been escalated in the, in the fire, the fire department's capital improvement plan. There's a possible opportunity for a grant to get that done as well because there's a lot of grant money out there right now. That's $25,000. That's not a lot of money. If it's not, and if we don't get a grant, we can pay for that out of free cash. There's a replacement for engine one scheduled in fiscal year '27. That will be a lease, and it's already paid for and within the operating budget. There'll be no override for that. The cardiac monitor replacement, we've done that. We played, we did that with ARPA monies. Computer replacement's been done. Server refresh, that has been already paid for. It's done off the capital plan. There's a, there's a town fiber optic network. The town has wrote, written a grant, in one, a grant for that. So that money will, is no longer going to be on this capital plan. There's an administrative cruiser replacement on the schedule. That's coming out of our operating budget. It is not going to be an override. There's a police squad room construction that has been taken care of, that was donated to the town. That's all set. That's been paid for. It's off the plan. A flashing crosswalk, solar-powered P speed displays. Those are in this--
This warrant.
This warrant for free cash. It will not be included as an override. There is animal control vehicle. We are now regionalizing that. That will no longer be needed. It's coming off the plan. There's a shellfish constable. That's already been paid for. That's, that's off, off the plan. There's cruiser carport construction. I spoke to the police chief yesterday. That is no longer on, on the plan. That's coming off the plan. There's a harbor master office construction that was identified in fiscal year 2025. That's not in the fire, that's not in the harbor master, the police chief's plan right now. That's coming off the plan. There's a mobile command post that's in this warrant here. There, and it's coming out of free cash. It's not overriding anything. There's an admin police vehicle replacement. That, again, those come out of the operating budget. It's already funded. There's some ATVs. There's an Argo that's up there for the future. I talked to the police chief yesterday about that. Those may or may not. If they're not needed, they will defer that. That'll be way off into the future. And again, we can cover that part of the operating budget or out of free cash or the stabilization fund. The cruiser replacement, we do replace a cruiser every year, $42,000. And that is coming out of the operating budget. It will not be an override. There'll be no extra monies. There's a replacement of a six-wheel dump truck. I believe that has already been, been done. There's a wheeled excavator that has already been done. We've already paid for that, either with ARPA money or with the stabilization slash free cash money. There is a replacement of a one-ton Chevy dump truck. That is going to be coming out of the operating expenses. There'll be no override. There's a replacement of a six-wheel dump truck that is way out into the future. We're not quite sure where that will come from, either stabilization or free cash. We do not go to the taxpayer and borrow override to purchase our capital, our capital needs. There's a sweeper replacement, again, way out into the future. There's equipment for the fighters, the John Deere lawnmower. All this, $15,000, $75,000 for a chipper. Those, again, will come out of free cash.
Alicia, you know what that tells me?
What?
That selectmen ought to go to a capital planning meeting once in a while. Meaning like myself, I should come to a meeting once in a while.
For, to what? To stay informed?
Just to stay informed.
Yeah, so then there's the Newbury Elementary School roof.
Can I interject something?
Just one second. Just let me finish this.
No, no.
Just let me finish the roof, just the roof. The, the Newbury repair elementary school roof, that has been identified. We take chunks of that off. This year, we're going to be spending $150,000 on that because we parsed that out. Okay, go.
Yeah. The assumption that is being made is that I brought all of this to light because it's all going to be a debt override. And that's not even close to the truth of what my presentation was trying to do.
So can you correct it, please? Can you correct the record?
Yeah, I can, I can correct the record. And here, this, in this budget message, our current, this is for fiscal year 2024. Our budget is $23,445,738, which is an increase of $979,000. So the increase in the budget from last year to the increase in budget to fiscal year 2024 is close to $1 million. Of course, there's a lot of things on that sheet that could come out of the operating budget if we're going to continue to increase the operating budget by close to $1 million a year. That, to me, that only makes sense. And what, the only two things that I said that are in that document right there about debt exclusions, there's only two items. And you really didn't have to read all that other stuff.
But I'm not there yet.
But there's only two, two additional debt exclusions that's in there that I think people ought to be aware of before they cast their vote. That, that's all I'm trying to say.
But the $2 million, you're saying there's a $2 million debt exclusion for an HVAC system? With my understanding that that was going to be covered by the school with ARPA monies, and again, he's been on vacation because last week was school vacation, and I will follow up with him tomorrow.
That would be great.
But I don't believe that's coming. I don't believe that's going to be a debt exclusion. And the other debt exclusion was for the Newbury Town Library, you said, the, replace the roof.
I didn't say it. It's in the plan.
Yeah, the roof is in here. Well, I, the thought, when I was speaking to the marshal Jespers in the capital planning committee was, when the time comes to address that capital need, it will probably go, they will probably go the same way they did at the Newbury Elementary School roof, and take sections of it and pay for it within the operating budget. So besides the looming Triton rebuild, the looming, whatever Whittier comes out to be, and that's very minor. I don't even know if that will even take an override. And this project to find the town hall solution, those are the only potential overrides for debt exclusions to borrow money that I foresee coming in the town of Newbury. That's all that I want to say. Eric.
So Dana, it seems that you're putting all these costs out there and asking people to assess and beware and make the right choices. Correct?
Correct.
Right. Alicia's lengthy reading of the budget and the budget plan, I think, shows that the capital planning committee, the finance committee, and the select board, the town administrator have a great control on town finances for how things are operating. Correct?
Sure.
So, so--
You can, you can say that.
Yep. And someone can choose to be a deer in the headlights and turtle, pull their legs in and hide out and say, "I can't, I can't make a decision. I can't do anything." But again, we were, you know, we've been doing this for years. And the costs that are, that we've been tracking since 2015 is we had an opportunity to build a municipal project and solve a problem in 2015 for $350 a square foot. And in 2020, the projected costs were $475. And now we're up to, with the COVID and the supply chains, we're up to $700,000. We're double the cost. If you keep kicking and you stagnate and you keep scaring everybody with all these other costs, we're never going to get there, and we're going to end up, as a town, paying twice as much for facility needs that we need to do. And the fact that we have all this capital planning and we have all this budget and things are covered shows how great the town management is. And we, and yeah, there are stuff, and there are things unknown, but they're in, we have a capital planning committee that has them on the lists. And select board members need to hear the town, but they also need to act and solve issues. So, you know, we can kick the can down the road, and we can pay a lot more for it, or we can solve and then get on to the next one.
So I'm going to actually wind this up now because it is 11 o'clock, and I'm just going to end it with, this is an identified need. The town hall has been an identified need for many, many years. The simple fact that we may have other expenses coming down the road with the school budgets is true. But that doesn't negate the fact that we do have this need today. When, when I, a simple, in my head analogy of this is if you have two children and one child needs a pair of shoes, you don't delay buying that pair of shoes because the other one might need it in five, in five years. I kind of see that here. I'm sorry that we had a global pandemic and that this, we didn't bring this up sooner because in construction, time is money. But I do not see any, this going away. I don't believe renting in perpetuity is the best use of taxpayer money over time. That's just me. You will have an opportunity to vote. You will have an opportunity twice to vote on this. Please, I want everybody to come to the town meeting on Tuesday night, listen to the presentation, and vote. And that's all that I can add. Thank you.
May I say something?
Yes.
I'd like to echo that. Please, everybody, this is very important for the future of your Parker Book and your town. So please come this Tuesday to the annual town meeting. They've updated even how you voted. You don't have to, you know, stand up and, you know, if you don't want your neighbor to know how you're voting, you get an electronic button. You push a button yes, you push a button no. So please, it's very important for your future.
Thank you. I want to hear a motion to close.
Motion to close.
Second. Vote in favor.
Aye.